I also put on there, obviously, hopefully you know me, but the EDC is so much more than me and we're able to do a lot of great things because Matt Brooks is our research analyst. He's right here with me and Sheryl Critchfield is helping the Chickasha Community Theater audition tonight and she couldn't be here. But that's the EDC. So when you look at the EDC, there's nineteen people between staff and board members that are all working trying to do good things in Chickasha. And I think it's important that everybody knows who's on the EDC. I also put a page in there that shows our website, our website list, our meeting dates and minutes. We meet the second Tuesday of every month, seven thirty in the morning in the Chamber Board Room. All are welcome and we typically have standing room only in terms of participation. Lots of guests come to the EDC meeting. Also, I've got a page in there about the hotel motel tax that's collected by the city of Chickasha. The city keeps ten percent, ninety percent goes to the CIA and then the CIA has an annual contract with the EDC and they fund the majority of the funds that come into the EDC. So I wanted to make sure that you saw that, you know, the definition of the hotel motel tax basically says the money that's collected by ballot language can only be spent on economic development and tourism. Also, in here, you're going to see the contract and we worked really hard on this contract last year between the city, the CIA staff, the city manager, the EDC board, and we made a lot of revisions. We made a lot of revisions based upon requests, some by council, some by citizens, to show how transparent we are. And I'm going to highlight a couple of those. You know, in the EDC contract, again, it's an annual contract. But on the very first page, it says that the CIA, as a public trust authority who's so beneficiary in the city of Chickasha, has determined that it is in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Chickasha to contract with the EDC. And further in this contract, it talks a lot about and defines what is the EDC supposed to do. And as you go through the contract, just know that when you look at the words, I've highlighted them, you see a lot about promoting, helping promote the city's image, supplying data and information and providing reports, and you're going to get a bunch of them tonight. It talks a lot about the fact that we are audited. New, this past year, because of the new contract, talks about how we submit our check register to the city, to the CIA on a monthly basis. And we, in my opinion, we went in and addressed some things that were needed to be addressed. The contract had been effective, but it was just like anything else. There's always time to make changes, make improvements, and I think we've done that and we've done it successfully this year. So that's who the EDC is. Now let's talk about what does the EDC do? So one of the things that the EDC does, we prepare a work plan with goals and then how we're going to achieve them. The EDC board approves that work plan, then it gets submitted to the CIA for approval. So you're going to have a copy of, you're going to have a whole bunch of stuff here on what the EDC does, but this is basically, you're going to see the work plan that's been approved and you're going to see that in color, after six months, I go in and do basically an update. Okay, here's our work plan, here's our goals for the year, how are we doing? Are we getting them done here? Do we still have work to do over here? And that is a written update that's presented to the EDC board and the CIA. In June, I'll do an annual update. So we'll take all of the goals that were listed and what we're going to do to achieve each goal, and then we're going to grade ourselves. More importantly, the EDC board can grade how the staff did, and then even more importantly, the CIA board can also grade, hey, they said they were going to do all these things, did they do them? Did they do them right? What's left to be done from this? In addition to the work plan, and there's, I've got so much information, I don't want to go through too much, but I do want to point out a couple of things. In the work plan, on the third page, on number five, it talks about promoting small business startup grants. In this, so far in this fiscal year, the EDC has awarded five new business startup grants. This is under goal one on recruiting new business and industry. The new business startup grant is intended for the mom and pops. We're trying to help people get started. The trigger on it is they have to have a business that produces retail or produces sales tax, so they have to have a retail business. We're doing that because we know how important sales tax is to the city of Chickasha. So the fact that we've issued five of those this year, I think is a huge plus. What it does is it pays their first three months rent or utilities, they normally choose the rent. And so if they know in their first three months, the EDC is going to pay their rent, hopefully they can do all the planning they need to do and have a really good forecast and save a little money and helps them get started. That's exactly what we're trying to do, is help them get started and be successful. We're also in discussions with the Small Business Development Center and CBT about the pros and cons of doing a business incubator. And there's some matching grants out there that we can apply for, and we're in the discussion stages of that. But again, it's so important that we help our small businesses get started. And then once they get going, of course, we want to do what we can to also support them. And a lot of that comes from some of the Chamber of Commerce initiatives. Want to point out that we've had several local manufacturers benefit from business expansion grants. The state Department of Commerce has an incentive, they came and talked to the February EDC meeting and talked about some of those incentives. Taylor &amp; Sons was a benefit of over two hundred thousand dollars from the State Department of Commerce to help them as they're trying to innovate and expand their local business. As much as we want new business, and we do want new business, we don't ever want to forget about folks that have been here for thirty years, forty years, fifty years. We have a radio commercial playing on cool right now, and it talks about a lot of those businesses that have been around for generations. We want to make sure that we're reminding all the folks in this trade area, whether it's through billboards or radio, that we want, those people that have been here, they're the backbone of Chickasha, much like the manufacturing industry that we have here. I had a editorial in last week's newspaper, The Good Stuff, and highlighted some of the success that HSI Sensing has had since they brought in Genesco, relocated them from up north, brought them in and expanded operations here. Genesco's annual salary is over one million dollars. And seeing businesses and manufacturers expand in some ways is almost better than bringing in a new business, because those are people that have been here for a long time, they've got employees that have worked there a long time, and we're trying to make sure that they continue to stay here for a long time. Couple other things in this packet that you have. We work with the Department of Commerce and we receive RFPs. Since July 1st of 2023, we've received twenty-eight RFPs. And there's a sample sheet in there that talks to you, just so you can kind of see, what is the commerce saying, okay? It's XYZ company and they're looking for an eighty-five thousand square foot building, or a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot building, or sixty to a hundred acres. We rarely have what these, what the commerce is. We don't know the name of the companies, they're all under a code name, if you will. Confidentiality is so important in economic development, but we rarely have. I think Matt processes all of our RFPs, and I think of the twenty-eight requests that we've received from the State Department of Commerce since last July, we've only been able to submit for three of those. And on those three, two of them were the thirty-three acres that the EDC owns on Old Highway Eighty-One by the railroad tracks. Unfortunately, it's in flood plain and it's problematic, but we're not able to, we don't have the inventory here that we'd like to have. I hope that changes. Hopefully later on in the summer, there'll be more discussions here at city council about a possibility of how that could change, where we could offer more inventory for manufacturing to come in. We'll save that for later in the summer. Also, you saw a lot in my report about promoting. I've been called a cheerleader, and when I was called that, I think they meant it derogatory. I love it. There's nothing I love more than promoting Chickasha, Oklahoma. We've got a lot to be proud of here. When you look in your report, you're going to see a, I just gave you a list of all the different links of negative articles that have been written about Chickasha just in the past few months. Unfortunately, a lot of that, as we know, is the media, especially Oklahoma City TV, is going to come down when we have tragedy like we've had recently. So I believe that it's one of the most important things that EDC can do, is help shape our view of Chickasha. And you'll also see that we had twenty-six crime stories done recently, but in the past year, you've got links, and I'll be glad to email these to you if you'd like, or you can click on them, but over a hundred and thirty-one positive stories about what's happening in Chickasha. That's how we shape the image. That's how we get businesses interested in possibly coming to Chickasha. It's how we get people to consider living in Chickasha. That image is everything. Last July, I'm sorry, last June, we're on the front page of the Sunday Oklahoman. It was a great story about a lot of the Chet Hit development and all the things that triggered that. Then we turned around on Christmas Day and we're again on the front page of the Oklahoman, and that's included in your packet, and again, talking about the leg lamp. And as we talk about that, what we're also trying to do is we're trying to grow our local economy. And the EDC has gone in and collaborated with KSWO and Lawton, and we have a Visit Chickasha camera on top of the Savoy Hotel, this is in your packet. And you'll see right there, it shows Visit Chickasha, and then it shows the leg lamp and they're doing a story about the weather, okay? I don't know how much everybody watches TV these days, but in Oklahoma, we're probably going to watch the weather, especially this time of year. We also run TV commercials on that. The KSWO and Lawton, it reaches from Wichita Falls all the way up to Rush Springs. It's a huge coverage area that allows us to try to continue to grow our economy. One of the things in the, again, the contract and my work plan, is it talks about tourism, trying to promote Chickasha as a tourism destination. Excuse me, since 2021, we have won five different Red Bud Awards for state tourism initiatives, and this year, we are nominated for five more. Doesn't mean we're going to win them, but it just means we're starting to be recognized on the state level for a lot of the tourism things. And yes, the leg lamp impacts that, but so's the food truck championship, and so's the fairgrounds and the sports complex. And trying to concentrate on that experience and how we can be welcoming to our visitors is one of the most important things we can do here in the community. Part of the whole idea behind why Chickasha, hopefully you've seen the billboards, we've got eleven different ones in five different counties. And it says, why Chickasha, eat, shop, play, and stay in Chickasha. Those are getting ready to change out, and we're going to recognize with logos different businesses that have been here for a long time. Again, I want to welcome those new businesses that are coming into town, but I want to give a big old hug to people like Roy's and Ross's, Jay's Jewelry, Jake's Rib. There's a whole bunch that have been here for years and years, and we want to do everything we can to help support them. When I talked about changing the image, my goal when I first got here in 2020 was to change the image that we have when we live here. What I witnessed in Oklahoma City in Bricktown for eighteen years is the success of maps happened because people at the time, late eighties, early nineties, didn't believe that Oklahoma City could do anything. But as the people that lived there started believing in their city, incredible things happened. I think that same thing, we're on the verge of right here. And no, we don't have a maps. Our sales tax increase is going to fund water, and that's fantastic. But we've got a lot of other fantastic projects that make people's eyebrows raise when they come into Chickasha and say, you're really doing that here? I've heard it, and it's one of the best compliments that I can hear. When we talk about our community and believing in ourselves, in your packet, I'm going to talk about this fence until the paint fades. When the Chickasha Area Arts Council puts Chickasha, Oklahoma, good things happen here, that wasn't an advertising ploy by the EDC or the chamber. That was the Arts Council saying, you know what? We believe that. Good things do happen here. And as we change our mindset, incredible things will continue to happen. All right, here we go, last one. So again, I know I'm giving you a lot of information. I'm hoping you'll look this over, and I really hope you'll call me and say, Jim, what do you mean here? Or if you don't agree with it, tell me. Hey, I don't agree with this. I don't understand what this means. And let's talk about it. So Chickasha's growing. We know that by looking around. We, you can see the amount of housing additions being built. But just last week, the U.S. Census Bureau released the estimated growth, and we've got some cities highlighted there. They're estimating that from the census in 2020, when we had sixteen thousand fifty-seven people, that we are now sixteen thousand seven forty-five. And you'll see on the second page of this is that the growth, we have grown more in three years than we did from year 2000 to 2020. In twenty years, we only grew by two hundred and one people. In the past three years, we're up almost seven hundred people. And when you go back to the first page and you look and see what's happening in Newcastle, Blanchard, and Tuttle, wow. There's a tidal wave coming, and it's people. And as a council, as you all addressed, water infrastructure needs, I think that was so important. But I think what we're going to see now, over these next seven years, we're going to continue seeing growth of people wanting to live in Chickasha, but they may be working anywhere. Certainly after the pandemic, people's idea of where you can work, live, and play has changed. It's changed a lot. But we're definitely growing. More people live in the city limits of Chickasha, Oklahoma now than ever have. We have the highest population our town's ever had. And we're not twenty-five thousand or thirty-thousand people, but we are growing. And we've got more coming. There's more homes being built. I continue to see more and more starter homes that needed a lot of love and that people are going in and doing remodels on those. It's absolutely fantastic to see. There's also a page there on downtown visits. Our downtown's growing too. From 2022 to 2023, we had two hundred and eleven thousand more people, more visits in downtown Chickasha. It doesn't mean that all we care about's downtown. It just means that it's getting a lot of attention and it is continuing to be part of our brand and what we're known for. You know, cool news, put a report out, and I put a copy of it in here. Last week, they reported about how Chickasha sales tax in the last reporting period went up, Grady County went down. And on the very last page, you're going to see the Chickasha by the numbers. And the Chickasha by the numbers indicate that last fiscal year, Chickasha had the highest sales tax collections ever. This year's going to be bigger, and it's going to outpace inflation. A lot of people say, oh, well, everything costs more. It absolutely does. But our increase in sales tax collections is going to outpace inflation by over two percent. Our economy's growing, and again, according to the cool news and the report they gave, is that Grady County's went down in that last period. Good things happen in Chickasha. It's an exciting time. When we hosted an Economic Development Conference recently, we had economic development people from all over southwest Oklahoma come in along with representatives of the Small Business Development Center from all over the state. Brent Kissling, former director of the State Department of Commerce, was the featured speaker. He was very complimentary of what's going on in Chickasha, and he was at the press conference that Chet Hit had last April, when he was still in his role. Before Brent, Kissling was the director of the State Department of Commerce, he was the economic development person for the city of Enid, Oklahoma. He understands rural economic development. He basically recognized Chickasha and gave us a lot of positive comments because he said, I can tell you're a town that works together. The biggest problem he sees in rural Oklahoma that prevents towns from being successful is when people don't want to work together. Doesn't mean we always have to agree one hundred percent. Doesn't mean that there won't be some times that our opinions are a little different. But if we can continue to try to find that common ground on how we can work together, the city, the chamber, the EDC, the schools, the fairgrounds, good things happen in Chickasha. I know I've taken a lot of time, but I also would be glad to answer any questions.
I got one. Last fall, Jim, you remember giving us a draft, set of goals? It was well after the contract was signed with you from the CIA. Do you remember when that was?
When the contract was signed with CIA?
No. You came to the council and you gave us a list of goals for the EDC for your next year. Do you remember that?
I don't remember it specifically, but I would assume you're referring to the document I just gave you today that's updated.
No, it was called a draft, set of goals for the EDC.
Okay.
Yeah, it had several pages. Anybody?
Okay. Councilman, it very well could be the document you have today, but it's not a, it was labeled a draft then, but now it's an approved document, so it no longer says draft?
Right. So I was just wondering to see if you could track for us, you know, the deliverables from when you issued your goals from last year till now, like you mentioned earlier, your report card.
Yep.
So how do you quantify your activity and the deliverables that Chickasha is expecting from you from last, from last contract signing till now?
So in that work plan, it lists the goals, then it lists the, here's how we're going to achieve the goals. And then, as I stated earlier, in January, I went in and gave a written update, provided it to the EDC and the CIA. I'm giving it to you today, and then we'll do it again in June, because that's when our fiscal year ends. So we'll be able to, you can look through that, councilman, and see what I'm saying that we've done and some things that we haven't got done yet. The clock's ticking, we don't have much time left.
I hear that.
But the goal is to get as much of those things done, but you have the packet right in front of you.
Yeah, but there's no way to track what you said from last fall until now, pluses and minuses, deliverables from when you said this until you're saying this now. So that's what I'm saying. I'd like you to go back, find that document that you promised, these certain things you were going to work on from last fall, I think it was October, is when you actually got it to us.
Okay.
And see where you're at, where your scorecard is, and how well you did from then until now, because we're working right into the next fiscal year, it's already upon us.
I understand that.
And we have no way to track what you're saying that you did, so.
I don't, please excuse me if I come across as argumentative, I don't mean to be argumentative, but in that document, and I realize you just got it tonight and you haven't had a chance to go through it, it's a long document. In that document, when it says, here's my goal, and here's how I'm going to measure it, then there's also a response of, here's how I've done so far.
Right.
And when I say I, I mean the team. And it's the board, it's the staff, it's everybody. So once you look that over, if you still have some questions and you don't think I've answered it correctly, please reach out to me and I'd love to visit with you more detail.
Yeah, same one I just mentioned to you, because I have no way to track what you said from last fall until now. Impressive amount of information here, but we're still having the trouble tracking you. So my second thing, I can move on. Do you plan to adhere to the Open Records Act going forward in your next contract?
The EDC, we believe that we are not subject to open records. However, every request that the CIA has made for information, we've supplied to the city manager, and we believe that that contractually is our responsibility. We feel like that we addressed a lot of those items as it relates to accounting. Here's the thing, councilman. For an economic development organization to be successful, we have to have some level of confidentiality. I have to be able to sign a confidentiality agreement. And they get signed regularly. To do that, that means that any, if someone, if I was in negotiations with Home Depot, and someone says, hey, I wonder if Jim's talking with Home Depot, and they did an open records request, and I had to supply that information, we'd lose the deal. And I'm not saying we're getting a Home Depot, but what I am saying is, that's the thing that keeps us from being able to, we'll do anything open records. Everything else that the city has asked for, and the city's not asked for, anything that we haven't been able to provide, it's, we submit it into the city manager, and then he sends it off to wherever it needs to go.
Right. Well, you were actually months and months last year delivering Open Records Act requests that you probably, I would imagine, it's kind of conjecture, but that you spent taxpayer dollars with, on lawyer fees to kind of push back on citizens that were asking for records. I was just wondering, is that kind of the same mindset you're going to go with going forward?
Well, the term taxpayer dollars is a term that, let's discuss a little bit. When the city clerk, or the city manager, or the city attorney has to supply information to open records, that's certainly taken up taxpayer dollars in terms of they're funded directly. As I pointed out earlier, the EDC is funded through the hotel motel tax, but just a portion of it. We've met and talked with the Attorney General, the state auditor, and said, hey, this is how we're operating. We did that over a year ago. And they've been fine with everything that we've done. There hasn't been any investigation, there hasn't been anything. So when you sit there and think about it, what would the city like to know, what would the CIA like to know that we haven't, what information that we haven't provided? I guess that'd be my question.
All right. I'll save that one for later. Going forward, I have noticed that we don't, as a council, since I've been here, we really don't get to sit with you in that, like a work planning session, to discuss goals that we want to see as a council going forward. All the goals and everything that you present are pretty much just sourced from you to us. And so I think there ought to be a little bit more synergy going on, because there's some things that we may want to share with you that we have goals for the city that you may not even know of.
Yeah, you know what, on that first sheet that you got, I put my cell phone number on there. I'm available anytime. And then I'll go to people's houses, you know, even if I may see things one way and someone else sees them different, I'm all for about discussing. So I would be open to any work session, anything we can do. Contractually, the EDC works with the Chickasha Industrial Authority. But all I care about is how do we work together? And that means, whether it's the council, or the CIA, or the EDC, or whatever, let's sit down and talk about it.
So you believe that you're mostly beholden to the CIA, not so much the council?
What I said is contractually, we contract with the CIA. But I think you probably have seen me at just about every city council meeting. So I hold the city council in high regard. I absolutely care about what you do and what you say. There's times when there's nothing on the agenda that has anything to do with the EDC or the chamber, and I'm sitting back there trying to hear what's going on in my city.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Jim, I ask, I'm new, RFP?
Request for proposal.
Request for proposal?
Yep. So what they want, what they want to know is, do we fit all the criteria? Do we have an empty building that has this many square feet, this much power, this much water capacity? And if we do, we submit it in to be considered for that business that the commerce is trying to find a home for.
Thank you for that. I've got a few other questions. Do you know how many, how many legacy businesses are on the Hug Chickasha list? Do you have any idea?
How many legacy businesses are on which list?
On the Hug Chickasha.
Oh.
I put Hug Chickasha, and I thought of a couple that are pretty old.
Well, I.
And I don't know, is that, we're just kind of making a.
I can tell you that on our current radio. On our current radio commercial, uh, we list Ross's, we list Jay's Jewelry, uh, we list Roy's Barbecue, we list Jake's Rib, Pawpaws. I think of a lot of businesses that's been around for, I may not have every, every single one of them, but, uh, I'm all about giving out a hug.
Can I bring one to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll bring one to you.
Okay.
Laughingly, more than Chickasha citizens eyebrows are raised because of our poor road, road conditions, the groups and the circles that you work with, with the EDC efforts, your thoughts?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm so glad you brought that up. You know, what I don't have any control over is roads, water, sewer, okay? Tell you what we did though, is we started to keep Chickasha beautiful back in, in 2020, and it had a lot of scrutiny under it. And at the time, it was kind of an individual effort that I initiated. Now Cheryl Critchfield in our office, she does a fantastic job of working with schools, working with civic groups, doing things like cleaning up Shannon Springs Park the day after Fourth of July. So we're, we're very concerned with what our city looks like, but there's certain things that we don't have any control over, and roads, sewer, and water are part of them.
But part of the work together, I'm glad that you have noticed, and, and would be, uh, what would I say, just, you, you realize the issue.
What we do.
That, that many citizens that, that, that have lived here a long time.
Sure.
Have, have seen it continue to be an issue, when things in the past were like, "Well, don't worry, that problem will be solved after we do this." And then a lot of the focus and the energy gets involved in a very neat thing, but, but nothing gets done on, on those matters. I have one last one. You mentioned the tidal wave, a tidal wave of perhaps what could come from the directions of growth and whatnot. And I just put slash, "Free market?" Question mark. What, what do you feel like would need to be subsidized in any manner? If there's a tidal wave coming, then wouldn't the free market just be able to take care of the matters of the future of Chickasha?
Some may, some may not.
Right.
So, so, there, in other words, we have gaps right now in our, in our local economy. There are items that people cannot purchase in Chickasha. They'd like to, they'd like to shop local, but they have to leave Chickasha to, to purchase some of those items. If we were looking at a, at a store that could come in and fill in the gap, and should there be an incentive? Possibly. It depends on, some of them may say, "Look, I'm not coming to your town unless you do this and this." Then, whether it's the EDC or the city council, those are business decisions that have to be made. What's, what's best? Is it worth it? How bad do we need them? Uh, so I would look at that on a case by case basis. But Councilman, I, I did a really bad job of answering your previous question.
On the?
On, on, when you're talking about roads?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
A lot of people say, "Why are you so focused in on retail? You ought to be working on manufacturing jobs. We want those too." But we know that as our retail economy grows, our sales tax grows, okay? Means our local businesses are doing well, but it also means the city's budget can grow. If I, as a citizen that live here in Chickasha, want to see an improvement in my roads, what I can do in my current position is try to do everything we can to get people to shop local, spend their money here, and bring in more businesses that will help grow the city's budget in general funding.
And we're growing the city budget because, in your opinion, why? Why, why do we want to see the growth in the city budget?
Yeah, and in terms of the amount of revenue that's available, it comes, as our retail sales go up, our sales tax collections go up. I don't know the exact number, but I think the ci, I think it's somewhere around 80 or 85% of the city's budget comes out of sales tax. And, uh, the, the, the key is, we've got to make sure the city has the money it needs to operate. And I'm, I'm sure, as you all do work sessions and understand how challenging it is to run a city, you know, the, but if, as sales tax collections go up, then maybe department budgets can go up, and maybe one of those are roads. I don't know, I'm not the city manager, that's, that's certainly their decision.
I can think of several endeavors that don't involve retail, but they're welcome to move to our town, maybe a small business that, uh, has a service of some kind, that, uh, that really is not going to be a taxable matter, but if it employs people that are, are going to live here, I'm, I'm for it as well, but they would not be eligible for what, what I, I think you presented earlier, in some of those program.
So like childcare, for example, okay? Childcare is something that's, that's a, a state topic. Every rural town, and, and even the urban cities, they need more good childcare. If we want to get ladies to work, they've got to have a place to drop off the kids. And maybe that's a guy's too, maybe it's a guy's responsibility. Whose ever responsibility it is, they need childcare. And so if we could recruit a childcare business or two in Chickasha, that's something that we would love to do, but every town in Oklahoma is faced with that, because it impacts the workforce and it's so important.
But they'd also be welcome here if they were a family that chose to just mom stay at home with the kids.
Absolutely.
Or dad stayed home with the kids.
At, at, whatever. I'm not here to, to work that out.
Well, thank you for your presentation and answering my questions, Jim.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
My last question, Jim, is, so, back to your goals. Um, I have been in a lot of the EDC meetings where you've reviewed the goals, and it does appear that these have been goals that have been there for a while, and they're just kind of a work in progress all the time, being updated. And in review of the CIA's charter, the contract, your goals seem to be in line with what is expected from the contract.
So the.
So you're, you're basing your goals and objectives off of what the CIA is expecting out of you.
Absolutely.
So that's how important it is in line, that we understand what the CIA is expecting from you and what you're delivering.
That, that, that's correct. The, the major goals, bringing in new jobs, that's not going to change. That's always going to be in a, a goal of the EDC, okay? How we do that, that could change a little bit from year to year. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. How we're going to achieve those goals, that's what we look at. When, whenever I write those out though, I go to the actual language of the CIA contract and say, "Okay, this is what we're contractually supposed to do, now how do I do that? And then how do we measure it the best we can?"
Jim, I got, I got a couple of questions. Um, I think he had just answered one, and that's the CIA con, this contract with the CIA, the, the council votes on that, right? That's a, that's a contract voted on by us, right?
I, I, I believe so, but, but that's.
I've slept a lot since the last time we did it.
Okay.
I don't believe it.
It's not?
It doesn't.
The EDC?
It's with, I thought the city manager, the trust authority, the trust manager.
Did the, the contract, yeah. He, he reviews it and.
Signed it.
I believe. Isn't that right, Brian?
Yeah, that's, EDC contract, does something come to council?
It doesn't, okay. Well, there you go. Need to pay more attention. Um, now, the EDC meetings, I've, I've just recently become not just a spectator with my new position, but those meetings, they, they are open to the public, and anybody can ask questions. I mean, I've never, I've never asked a question being, being there, but as a spectator, if something's being talked about, it's, it's not frowned upon to interject or ask a question or even present an idea, correct?
No, it, it's happened. If it's a lengthy discussion item that isn't on the agenda, much like, excuse me, what you did tonight, that could be referred to, "Hey, let's discuss this afterwards." Uh, there's a lot of discussions after the EDC meeting, and we're always willing to listen or try to answer questions the best we can.
And on the open records request, has there been any, in recent time, um, that has been asked upon the city that been asked from you that you haven't been able to fulfill? On top of your head?
Oh, there's been a lot. To be able to answer that, I'd have to go back and look, I think, I know Cheryl worked for a week, one, uh, about a year ago, trying to answer every single one, but to be able to, as far as I know, yes, but is there one that we couldn't, like, for example, if someone wants to know what the EDC did in 2012, I'm going to do my best to try to go back through records, but I may not have any records that are, you know, over 10 years old.
What I was, what I was driving at was that, uh, you know, Mayor Mosley was very adamant about the flow of information from the EDC to the city, and then the city to whoever's requesting it. And so I believe since the new contract, uh, we've had signed, that process is, has been relatively smooth, and citizens can request anything they want through the city, and the city's going to turn around and ask you, and if you can provide it, you're providing it, there's no.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I was getting at. I know that it had not, maybe always worked like that, but I know that it's been working like that since the new contract. I did want to touch on, um, this is just my personal opinion on, on economic development, but to me, um, again, I'm, I'm 40, so I'm, I'm a kid when it comes to all this. Um, but, you know, the, the, the general rule of thumb was, you went out and recruited an industry by offering them, you know, the, the carrot on the stick, right? The tax incentives or the, the free places to stay or whatever. But in, in my opinion, you know, my generation of younger, it seems more like industries recruit communities, and they do that based on quality of life, where their employees are going to want to live, because they're not going to go where their employees don't want to live. Um, especially for my generation of younger, employees pay attention to that. They're not going to live somewhere that has nothing to do, or is not, you know, pretty or, or whatever. I don't know how to say that, what the politically correct term is that, so.
Attractive.
Attractive, there we go. There we go. Um, so to me, there's been a paradigm shift in the last 20, 30 years, that, that old way of thinking of, you know, we need to have this reserve of money to offer these tax incentives and dangle this carrot out there, that really doesn't work anymore. That, almost that kind of, uh, thinking, you, you, you're putting a cart before the horse, the horse is now quality of life, things to do, um, places where people want to live. Uh, and I'm just, like I said, it's my personal opinion, it may not be true, I, I don't know. That's how I see it.
Yes, that, that plays an important role. The first thing though is, we've got to have a place for them. We've got to have a building that is certain specs. We've got to know exactly, uh, the water capacity, how much power we have, the sewer capacity, fiber. There's a lot of things that, we have to check every single box, not four out of five, we got to check every single box, and to even, to even have them look at us. And that's where we're, uh, we have, we have a very small inventory of available sites for new businesses to come in, as it relates to manufacturing. Retail, that's a different question, I mean, different subject altogether, we have a lot of sites available for that.
What I was driving at is that, your number five on here, you're elevating market Chickasha's brand.
Yes.
I've been in Chickasha, ugh, it's 13 years now, time flies, but to my memory, I don't remember a time where Chickasha's had more of a brand presence across the state. And with that, goes back to my previous comment about, you know, industry recruits communities, well, without putting your community out there and branding it and marketing it, they're not going to know that you're even out there.
You're, now, the, I understand your point, and you're right. For a business, or manufacturer, whoever it may be, they're going to come into Chickasha and see how we look before they contact me, or the city manager, or anybody else. They're going to, they're going to lay eyes on Chickasha, and, but to get them here, we got to give them a reason. They're, they're not just going to pop in and, and search rural Oklahoma, okay? And so that's where elevating our brand, we want people talking positively about Chickasha, Oklahoma, all over the state, all over the Southwest. Um, and that's where tourism can play a huge role. As we have more visitors come in, you never know when one of those visitors might be someone with a company, and they look at relocating. I think the story of HSI is a testament to that, that someone stopped in and they liked it so much, you know, uh, we, we still have them here now decades later, and then the same thing with Chet Hitt. You know, what, the tourism eye of the, of the silly leg lamp caught his eye, and then when he visited with city staff and saw how business friendly our city is, that's how, you know, we got him to invest millions into our town.
And you, you mentioned the leg lamp, and, and love it or hate it, um, I attended a Tinkers Mayor Conference not too long ago, there was invitation, uh, so, Lawton was represented, Chickasha was represented, of course, Midwest City, Bethany, um, Oklahoma City, McAllister. So when they found out I was from Chickasha, guess what was one of the first things each one of those mayors and city managers asked me? "How's that leg lamp working out for you?" And it sparked a conversation. So whether they meant it to, you know, in a negative manner or a positive manner, it, it ultimately led to a positive conversation about what our community's doing, and then what their community's doing, and it started the sharing of ideas, and, and what works in their community and what doesn't, and things like that. So, again, love it or hate it, it is a good segue into positive conversations that happen all the time.
The leg lamp has worked. It's worked year round, in terms of drawing people into town. And again, everybody has their own opinion of it, and I respect that, but it, it has brought people into Chickasha, and it has gotten people talking about Chickasha. If you want any of those, all those 131 links I sent you, there's, the amount of people that come into Chickasha, and they have a YouTube, uh, they're a vlogger on YouTube, and we don't even know they're here, and they do this video saying what a great town we are, and they might be from anywhere in the United States, we just search it from time to time and see these. I posted one on the Leg Lamp Facebook page today. Again, I get it, everybody has different opinions on it, but from a, uh, an iconic structure to bring people off of the interstates, or to bring them, uh, into Chickasha, it's worked.
Any other, any other discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question. You said the, the meetings are open, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can I suggest maybe looking into live streaming the meetings, so people that work or have kids can see the meeting?
Sure.
Okay. I guess that would help with transparency.
Yeah, yeah, and I, uh, we, I know we've done like Zooms with, with, uh, those in the, uh, the, like, the chambers done some Zooms, haven't thought about live streaming, that's something we'll look into, sure.
Another thing is, I think I asked you, when you brought this list, does the EDC have any plans to help promote the sports complex? It brings in 200,000 people a year, uh, they stay at hotels, they, at the restaurants, they go shopping. I mean, it's a perfect asset that we have, that could, could benefit from y'all help promoting it.
Uh, sports complex is, is tremendous. We know that in terms of economic engines, the sports complex and the fairgrounds bring people into town. They, exactly what you just said, hotels, restaurants, gas, and that kind of stuff. What role the EDC could play in promoting that, that's, I'd be glad to have that discussion with, with the city manager, and, and, you know, what, how we, what we could do to help out. Our new Festival of Light slash Tourism Director is, uh, here tonight. Uh, Matt Stockman comes from the Tulsa Chamber, where he spent the past 11 years, um, and one of the things that he did in Tulsa was for, during COVID, I believe, in 2020, he oversaw their sports complex. Uh, he's oversaw major sporting events in, in Tulsa, so, uh, I'm hoping that as he, uh, gets a, some more time, uh, here in Chickasha, and gets a chance to get out to see the sports complex, we'll try to figure out what role, uh, the whole team between the chamber and the EDC could do to help promote that more.
Another thing, uh, there's a lot of businesses that have been here a long time. I suggest, um, including all of those.
Yeah, I, I, we'll do, we'll do our best, that could be hundreds, you know, uh, we, we don't want to not leave anybody, uh, we don't want to purposely leave anybody out, uh, so we'll do our best to promote, uh, all the businesses that have been around for a long time. But, and long time might mean, you know, how long's Interurban been here?
13 years.
Okay, so, that, you know, so, yes, we, we, we definitely want to have an approach where we're promoting all of Chickasha.
I'd suggest maybe if we all have an idea of who we're wanting to see, to submit that, rather than hoping that you guys encompass everyone, and then we're mad when we don't see that name that we're looking for? Maybe if we have names in mind, we should get them to you.
Put my cell phone.
Anybody, like anybody in the community.
Uh, put my cell phone out there to you all for a reason, and I'm, I'm, I'm all ears, and, you know what? You guys might have a better idea of how to do something than I do, and if that's the case, then let's do it. All that matters is if we can find a pathway to work together, we can do incredible things.
Hey, Jim, can you define for me what, uh, Chickasha's brand is, in your opinion?
That's a great question. So, I know that when I moved back here in 2020, that was my first question. What's Chickasha known for? And, uh, the interviewing committee answered, "Well, well, we used to be the horse trailer capital of the world." Uh, then someone quickly said, "Oh, the Festival of Light." And then there was some discussion that that only happens, you know, uh, six, seven weeks, uh, during the holidays. And there was, it was kind of hard to have a brand identity. My opinion, and how I've tried to market Chickasha, is that quaint, small town, where everybody knows your name. that quaint, small town, where everybody knows your name. You feel good about where your kids are going to school, you feel good about your neighbors down the street, there's a lot of community pride. And we can market that, I, I believe, because we have the close proximity to Oklahoma City. So in, in one of the deals, there was a article written by a travel writer, and the Chickasaws Nation actually had her come in. And, and the title of it is Chickasha is ChristmAs Town. She wrote that last July, and she talked about a lot of our initiatives. And I like the moniker, ChristmAs Town. To me, it's a lot more than just the commercial side of Christmas. It means that we're neighborly, we believe in the spirit of Christmas year round, not, not just during the holiday season. Obviously, with the Festival of Light and its original meaning, I think it plays in well with, with what our identity is. But I, I, you know, I said it, I think, from day one, and I still would like to see a Hallmark movie shot here showcasing what a quaint, charming, small town we are.
So, yeah, so with the Chickasha brand, when you think about that, you have like a brand logo, like you have a, a blurb that really describes what you mean whenever you say the Chickasha brand. Is it strong communities? Is it, you know, you know, we love Christmas, you know, whatever you're, you know, whatever, I mean, we don't really, we have why Chickasha, right? But.
We, we got, one of the things that EDC created back in 2020 was the concept of a tourism aspect to Chickasha. We call it Visit Chickasha. Every town does that, because when people are doing Google searches, the, it's, it's how you can get your name to come up. We created a website, a social media platform, and it has more visits than a lot of the other ones that we have. The Visit Chickasha is telling people everything that's going on here, whether it's something going on at Legends, or it's something at Jane W. Grill, it shares a lot of information. But in terms of a brand, mostly what we've done is use different hashtags, trying to say who we are, and ChristmAs Town is a hashtag that we've used a lot. We've changed our logo, the city's changed their, you know, your logo. I think everybody's trying to, to stay relevant in that. But if you have some comments on what you think we need to do in terms of how we market our brand, let's, let's do it, let's talk about it.
I do. So the last thing that I have for tonight is, are you prepared to give us an update on what's going on with the downtown park?
Well, I can tell you this, is that the Chickasha Community Foundation is obviously the entity that's overseeing the downtown park.
Right.
It's my understanding that they're in what would be called a silent fundraising stage. They know that phase two of the park, they've looked at the amenities, they have an eye, idea of what that's going to cost. And I believe that Pat Brooks and Chickasha Community Foundation, they're looking for some large donors before they kick off the public fundraising. They want to be able to announce, here's how much the park's going to cost, and gosh, we already have this, this and this committed. And I don't know what Mr. Brooks's timeline is on that, but it wouldn't surprise me if we heard a lot more about the park and kicking off the public fundraising, you know, maybe later this summer. I do believe that it will be fantastic. I, I'm, I'm very excited about the impact that will have on all of Chickasha. I believe it'll bring people in from all over. And you're going to hear about a pedestrian bridge here a little bit later, and I think it could have a tremendous impact on the pedestrian bridge, if you could imagine a concert in the park, a movie in the park, and, and the ability of people to be able to walk over a pedestrian bridge if they park at the fairgrounds and, and attend that.
Right, so it was, it was concerning to me that we really haven't heard a whole lot about the downtown park in some time, so stay excited about it. I figured, you know, we would hear some updates, probably once a quarter, but anyways, just curious. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, Jim, thank you. I, for one, I know we still have a long way to go with the city and the EDC's relationship, it's a constantly evolving and growing, but I do want to say thank you to you and your staff. I know your staff works amazingly hard, and they're really good at what they do. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
And I want to, what do we have, any other council communications real quick?
I've got just a quick note. I want to thank Superintendent Crosland for inviting the city to be representative at high school graduation, and you had prior commitment, and so I was able and honored to do so in your absence. I believe they had a hundred and seventy-three graduates, so hopefully our future is bright. And on a fun note, I believe tomorrow, Dr. Hill may be able to answer this, I believe tomorrow that our lady Drovers leave for Georgia for the World Series softball. So, go kick butt is the nice way to put it, but very proud they're representing the university and the community very well, so we wish them luck. Safe travels and injury-free play, so good luck, Drovers.
Well, I sent you to graduation, because they wanted to see you in a way.
Mayor, I had one, just to, wanted to make a comment about some very impressive work with what's happened, how the follow-up, and all stages of the water distribution that's happened south of A to Cipiel, and especially, I don't know if you call it the mop up part or the finish up part or whatnot, but the respect that they gave to properties when they came back and put sod in the yards, and actually had same material patching and whatnot, it was a pretty clean effort. So I hope that went together okay engineering-wise and everything, and is implemented well. But from just driving by and watching the process and the finish up, there was a lot to be, that impressed me. Just want to make that comment.
Yeah, I'll pass that on to Keith and the, the crew. Anybody else?
I've got something, I'm not sure who it needs to go to, or, I was on the website recently, and the financial transparency, I think there's a lot that needs to be updated. I'm not sure who would do that. I know, like, the hotel motel tax isn't updated, and.
If you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for sending that email, and I believe it went to Shay.
Okay.
And then Shay brought it, you know, to our attention, that it was something that we needed to get updated.
Okay.
And so we are working on it. So hopefully sooner than later, we'll have that all up to date.
I appreciate it. I just hadn't heard back, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we move on, I want to back up, because I think I may have missed somebody. Rick, did you, on your sense of comments, was that for the bridge, or was that a different agenda? I didn't want to skip you if it was for something else.
I would be happy to speak about the bridge, or to speak about the chair's presentation, although I don't have a lot of time.
Okay, I just, I didn't know what, I couldn't decipher what you were here for, so I just didn't want to miss you if it wasn't the bridge, but I'm going to call on you at the bridge. Thank you. Is that it for council communications? Okay, let's move on to item number four, consent docket.
Move that we accept is presented. Second.
You know, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Stane. Ella White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Gertis?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Item. Six A, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve Resolution 2024-09R, requesting quality event designation for the Red Angus Youth Expo to be held June 8th through 4th, 2024.
Move to approve Resolution 2024-09R as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Havil White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
No.
Gertis?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item six B, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve the contract with the YMCA for operation of municipal swimming pool for the 2024 season.
A move that we approve the contract with YMCA for operation of municipal swimming pool for the 2024 season. Second.
Discussion.
Spencer, is this the same? Nothing really changed from last year?
There is a change on point eighteen, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah.
And a little bit of updating, Louis kind of went through and updated some of the language in it, but point number eighteen would be the, the biggest change, I would say, in your, in your program for the, for the, for the pool. So, but yeah, so that's, that's, that's the biggest one, I would say.
Louis is here to talk to us if.
And Louis can talk to you about it too, so, yep.
Like eighteen is, is a couple of questions about it, because we, last council session, we voted no on it, and then it shows up on this contract, so I know Louis has. Louis, do you want to come up and talk to us about it?